Ready to go.
Good morning. It is Wednesday, May twenty first, two thousand twenty five. This is the ten AM regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. All three commissioners are present. That constitutes a quorum. I want to mention a couple of things before we get started. We do have a public comment sign in chief, and we ask that before the public comment period starts and Mr. Lips displaying it that you sign in in advance. And there has been some media reporting about a discussion of potential changes to public comment rules. I'll just point out that is not on this agenda. We're still receiving feedback. First time of business is a proclamation, and would our presenters please come forth? Declaring June twelfth, two thousand twenty five as Women's Veterans Day. And I'll read the proclamation.
Good morning.
Morning.
Whereas Lincoln County proudly salute all women who courageously and honorably served in the in the armed forces of the United States since the American Revolution and throughout history in a wide variety of critical and oftentimes dangerous roles and assignments, and continue to serve our great nation today. And whereas through their selfless sacrifice, courage, dedication, and honorable military service, women veterans have safeguarded our heritage and freedom, while providing valuable service and expertise to our society. And whereas June twelfth, two thousand twenty five marks the seventy seventh anniversary of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, signed into law by President Harris Truman on June twelfth, nineteen forty eight, granting women the right to serve as permanent regular members of the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, and Air Force. And whereas women comprise one of the fastest growing demographics within the United States military and are expected to reach nearly twenty percent of the veteran population by two thousand forty five, but only approximately three percent seek services through the Veterans Administration. And whereas Lincoln County is home to more than four hundred women veterans who have served our country with honor and dignity and courage. And whereas women veterans have been leaders in securing not only their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also served at the forefront of numerous major progressive social change movements in history, paving the way for future generations to enjoy the unalienable rights, duties, and responsibilities afforded equally to all residents of the United States of America. And whereas Lincoln County is committed to supporting and recognizing the bravery of all women veterans, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice and laid down their lives to protect our county, state, and country. Now, therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board Commissioners hereby proclaim June twelfth, two thousand twenty five as Women Veterans Day in Lincoln County, and encourage all people in our county to join us in honoring women veterans for their outstanding achievements and invaluable contributions. Presenters, would you introduce yourselves and take it away?
Thank you. I am Keith Barnes. I am the Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer, and I would like to introduce.
Caroline. Caroline Caraboudian? Yeah, there you go.
Our Veteran Service. Boy, I can't even think of your title right now. So this is the second year that we have hosted the Lincoln County Veterans, Women Veterans Luncheon. Last year it was a great success, and we had about sixty attendees, and we're hoping to have about the same this year. This year, though, we've made a slight change as we've actually named this year's program. We are calling it the Eileen Irene Wilder Wilda.
Wilda.
Man. Honorable.
You got it.
Got it. I had this memorized, and now I'm having a brain meld. Luncheon. Eileen was a U.S. Coast Guard veteran from nineteen forty three to nineteen forty five. She served in the United States Coast Guard during World War Two. When I she would have been awarded D D two fourteen through the Presidential Proclamation in nineteen forty seven. When I first took this job, one of the things I learned about were sets of cremains at Bateman's Mortuary that were unclaimed remains of veterans, and she was one of those veterans sets of remains that were there. And working through the process, I was able to identify that she was a veteran, that she had served honorably during World War Two, and she had no other family in town or around the area, and we were able to get her interned at the National Cemetery in Willamette. Why I want to name the program after her is that she never sought any veterans' benefits, although she was eligible for them. And that's what we get with a lot of women veterans is they don't seek those benefits. And so we're trying to reach out to them so that we don't have those same issues forty years from now that we're having right now, is that we are making sure that we are reaching out to them, getting a chance to get them in their in the office, whether it be educational benefits, healthcare benefits, funeral benefits, or disability benefits. We want to make sure that they're aware of those benefits and that they can reach out to them. We have seen a huge uptick since our last luncheon with women veterans coming in, and I put that blame squarely on Caroline's shoulders here because of the hard work that she's done working with those veterans and coming out there. This year, I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Daniels, the Director of ODVA, is coming and speaking at our event this year, and that is purely because of the hard work that Caroline has done badgering her to get her to come into the office and do this luncheon. So she is the actual Caroline is the actual person who's putting on the event. I'm just taking the credit for it.
Typical. Typical, yeah.
Well, that's one.
New.
What's new?
Anything you would like to say?
It is June twelfth at the Western Inn Banquet. You can call our office at five four one two six five zero five seven zero to RSVP, and it'll be from twelve to one.
Eleven.
Eleven to one.
That's why I get to take credit is I get to correct her when she makes a mistake.
For either of you. Now, I know you mentioned very few women veterans access services, but it's also been my impression, a lot of male veterans don't either. They have the attitude that, oh, there's somebody out there who needs it more. Is that part of what you're dealing with when working with women veterans who are potential clients?
Certainly. It's a layered issue, that one being part of it. I'd say even for every veteran across the board, the struggle with feeling comfortable enough to even seek that out or quality control, you know, varying from location, location, wherever they might have lived, or when they exited service as well, has always been pretty shocking. It's gotten better over the years, I'll say, and I think that we lead by example on encouraging people to come in and create that environment for them to feel comfortable to come in and speak with us and their families as well. Yeah, I know. I agree. It's a it's it's gotten better, but there's definitely room for improvement.
Commissioners, Chuck and Miller, questions, feedback for our team?
I think we'd like to appreciate all you do for the veterans, and I think that's a great program, especially acknowledging the women, and I would just say we should maybe add the Coast Guard to our proclamation here.
Does it?
Oh, paragraph three, President Truman's Act, the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, it mentioned.
Did it include the Coast Guard at the time?
Yes.
Okay.
D O D wide, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
At the at that, okay, so history nerd, at that time, the Coast Guard had moved from the Life Saving Service under to under the Department of Defense, under the Department of the Navy during World War Two through to the beginning of the Korean War in nineteen fifty one. I think it separated again into the Department of Transportation.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. You know, I went to the lunch last year, and it was fantastic, the stories, the character, the integrity is just amazing. So thank you for your service. And, you know, we talk about benefits, but could you just briefly talk about what a career is like today in the military and, you know, what people should be thinking about? Or how do you begin to explore that here in Lincoln County?
Great question. Career as far as active duty conditioning out.
People are interested in serving. What's a good way to begin to think about that?
So if you're, I'm gonna jump in on this. If you're high school or they're taking all the way up to forty one years of age right now. So I was even talking to my brother in law, who's thirty five, saying, hey.
Yeah, right.
It's still you still got a shot here to do this. The best way, talk to people who have been in the military. Reach out for those questions and reach out to your local recruiter. That's the best. I mean, that's the only way to get in is to talk to local recruiters. Our recruiters come out from Albany, and I know they come out to all the high schools. And if they use my office sometimes, that spare room I have in the office to meet with clients or for perpetual future soldiers. And that's always been a good introduction. That way also we can start at the very beginning talking about benefits that they might receive after they get out of the military.
Yeah.
I myself spoke with my family members. My uncle's retired Navy, twenty plus years. My cousin still in the Army, so trying to get that firsthand experiences. You want to talk directly to an active duty member, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, Carolyn, you'd kind of talked about how there's still room for improvement. Do new recruits get talked to a lot about their benefits afterwards? Is it something that needs to improve in at least in what you've heard?
I think it does because it's just been such a mixed bag. There have been, you know, bases who have improved that, and then you get someone that moves from wherever, and they didn't have that great of an experience or setup. And that's what I mean, you know, that it there's definitely improvement right there. Having someone in whether four years or twenty and then just go, okay, figure it out. That's not okay. That's weird.
Yeah.
There is also a TAPS program, which is called the Transition Assistance Program. And within six months of your separation, you're supposed to go through this, which does talk about educational benefits, VA benefits, healthcare benefits that you'd qualify for. We do TAPS training in Portland through the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs and our V S O Association. But for like meeting with Coast Guard members, they call our office up all the time, and we're working directly with both the Coast Guard members and the NOAA members who are getting ready to separate. So and for me, joining the military, I showed up one day. My dad had my bags packed in a recruiter's business card on him. That's how I joined the military.
Well, thanks for talking about it, you know, and the stories, again, talking to veterans. My sense is they enjoy talking about it for the most part, so thank you, and ask your veteran their story, I would say.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So and I always appreciate the support of the board and everybody in the office with our office here, making sure that we're able to do the work that we are so dedicated and passionate about working with.
Yeah.
It's taken a long time to build the office. I remember when I came into office, we only had one part time V S O. Now we've got the two of you full time plus full time administrative support. And it's a sacred mission to me, absolutely. So are we ready for a motion, please?
Yes, I would move that we declare June twelfth, two thousand twenty five as Women Veterans Day.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Proved.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
I sign copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We move on now to adoption of the consent calendar. These items are routine or have been discussed at previous meetings. Are there any items on today's consent calendar which commissioners would like to either highlight or remove for individual consideration?
I have none.
Commissioner Chair Hall, just throw a plug out there, a highlight for the Lincoln County Fair at Chinook Winds. So I think that's a very interesting change for this year and going to be great to bring it to North County. So but other than that, no, I would make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
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 All right. We don't have a public hearing today. We've got a couple of decision and action items. These are both follow ups from our last meeting when we had presentations from Doll Disposal and Thompson's Sanitary on proposed rate increases for the new year. Dolls was first. Do we have somebody from Dolls here today? Yes, come on up, please. And introduce yourself for the record, please, and thanks.
Morning, Dave. Morning, Commissioners. My name is Dave Larmouth. I'm the Outreach Manager for Doll Disposal Service. I don't have anything new to share with you today, but I'm happy to take any questions if something's come up.
Any questions for Dave?
I have none.
No, Dave, thank you. Thank you. You've been very thorough, and Paul Seitz did talk about R M A last night at the Budget Committee Meeting, so.
We've been doing a lot of that.
The discussion continues. Yeah.
All right. Then I guess we can move to, oh, Councilor.
The proposal is a five point five two percent increase. So if you're okay with that.
All right, are we ready for action?
Yeah. So I move that we accept Doll's proposal rate of five point five, five point five two percent.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 So Dave, again, remind us when this goes into effect.
July first, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Thompson is on via computer, if you need him.
Okay.
We are up to Thompson's Sanitary Service and the rating course, the rate increase request of eleven point one percent. Rob Thompson.
Morning, Rob.
Good morning, if you can hear me.
Loud and clear.
Yep, sound good.
Like Doll Disposal, I do not have any additional comments to make, but I am here to answer questions if you have any for me.
Chair Hall, Commissioner Chuck, I have no questions.
Yeah, Rob, I have one question for you. I'd just like to acknowledge the rising costs for everyone right now in the county and in the state. But at the same time, we also need to realize that everyone, the customers are facing increases in other costs in uncertainty and a double digit increase. While it may be necessary for you, but might not seem prudent at this time. And if you would consider a nine percent increase, if that will keep you in the eighty five to ninety one percent.
Okay, so I do not have the mathematics on that. Mr. Chuck, so I would I would need to look at that and see if that keeps us inside the range. I am not positive because I can't tell from the Zoom connection whether or not Walter Budzik is on the call as our controller, and he might be able to look at that quickly. Just so we don't get delayed beyond the July first rate change. So not sure how you'd like me to proceed, just because it's a mathematical question that I don't have the answer to.
So a proposal could be just that it's the eighty five percent. If you want to do the percentage, whatever would be an eighty five percent within the operational ratio.
Could we come back the next meeting?
No, so they have to give a thirty day notice.
Okay.
Before the July first. So my proposal would just be whatever eighty five percent percentage would be, and we could do that. And I could calculate it after the meeting.
Okay, how can we capture this in the motion that?
You move that the day.
We want a single digit increase if possible, if it fits within the ratio.
That the percentage increase would be comparable to an eighty within the eighty five percent operational ratio.
Is that? Is that agreeable?
No, Commissioners, I I would stick with the original proposals, but make a motion as you feel comfortable.
Is there a motion?
I'm writing it down, Chair. So I would move that the Thompson Sanitary rate be in line with the eighty five percent of their operating allowance.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post.
All right, we move on now to discussion.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you all. Yep, glad to be here.
County Council, Brian Gardner, please come on forward, and we have discussion of the proposed fee increase. And just a reminder to the public that state allows us to view and adjust the upward, but every now and then downward our various fees. And Mr. Gardner, if you would take it away.
Thank you. Brian Gardner, Assistant County Counsel for Lincoln County. And since Commissioner Chuck, I know this is the first time dealing with this. I wanted to lay some of that out that Chair Hall was just saying. So Lincoln County, through each of its departments, we review the fees that are commonly charged to the public. So this isn't interdepartmental fees or other fees, but just the ones that are commonly charged to the public. We try to do that twice a year. We are allowed to do it twice a year, and we try to do it both those two times a year. And that's to ensure that the fees accurately reflect the cost of the service that the fee is attached to. So historically, we have addressed that, proposed fee schedule changes, and to be effective on January first and July first of each year. So the mechanism for that is once once each respective department reviews their fees, they're submitted to a county legal department for review, for compliance. And we have to basically make sure it complies with a whole bunch of different levels, depending on the fee in the department. But starting with the United States Code, the Code of Federal Regulations, and then Oregon revised statutes, but also session laws that can be passed by the legislature, administrative rules, the state building code, state mechanical code, all kinds of different things, down to the level of our Lincoln County Code as well, and our previous Board of Commissioner orders. In some circumstances, depending on the department, the proposed fees and fee changes, they have to be submitted to their state to a state oversight first, such as like Health and Human Services. They're the designee, our county departments, the designee from the state. So they would submit before they'd submit it to us, to the legal department, they'd submit it to their state counterparts. And that's the same with like planning does that as well. So they seek that approval first and then to make sure that it falls in lines with their the maximum amount it could be increased or changed or however, before it even comes to us. So in so just so you know, in this case, for those departments, H H S and specifically Environmental Health and our onsite SEPTIC, they already submitted these to the state. I've reviewed the state responses before I did the what regular legal review, so that's been done in this case. So each department, their work to review and update their fees. You know, these fees is what are what help enable the county to continue to serve our community and visitors. So as Chair Hall stated, in in general, the fees go up. They didn't all go up this time. Some were removed, at least two were reduced. One's not in the fee schedule, one's of behavioral health, which is done separately, and that'll be on your agenda soon to their fee schedule. But in general, they go up with as our costs go up, whether it be through regular inflation or if costs go up based on personnel or, you know, whatever. That's each department has to go through that and figure out what their fees should be. So the proposed fee schedule that you had as part of your packet there. Again, I know it's lengthy, it's thirty one pages. The reason why.
Can you scroll through it a little bit as he's talking? Appreciate it. Excuse me, Brian.
Yeah. So so what I do for the proposed to make it easier to find for the public and for commissioners is I highlight where when a change has been made, and I strike through even regardless of, I keep what it was before for this discussion item at this point. There is one difference that will happen that just came in a little late, and so I couldn't get it in this version. And that would be on page twelve. So this is something that's not highlighted yet, but it will be in a version that is that'll be attached before the next one, as well as the clean version. But so that's to the next, I believe it's the next page there. So the change here that you don't see is that that first line under swimming pool and spas, the word first will be removed, and it will say each, and the next line entirely will be removed. This is mainly to do, talking to Colleen with in environmental, because I was asking about, you know, well, there's certain time to get out to a site. Have you figured this out? She doesn't, she didn't bother, she doesn't calculate her time of going to a site or being somewhere. This is really for the testing for each pool. So she said it's it's this is just for the costs for to do this, the chemical tests, all that, all the stuff she has to do. So she said it doesn't really matter if it's each additional at the same spot. This is the cost is that is, and so that's what's reflected there. She did have, so these are some of the fees on pages eleven and twelve that you see so many different things highlighted. This is the first time she's updated hers in quite a while. These are ones that the state has already reviewed as well, and I went through the the different checks that I have to do. And some of it was just clarifying things that hadn't been clarified in a long time to that's to reduce questions, calls, things she has to deal with when when our customers have questions. She's also changing the on the page thirteen and just so right there, the the main change here is just moving RV parks into the hotels, bed and breakfast section and making certain fees for all of them based on number of spots or rooms. The other changes that usually come up that besides, as I said, onsite, which is begins those changes began on page twenty two. So those those were some clarifications of adding a few new fees.
So jump into twenty two then.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
As so just adding a few fees and and this is one of the places where one of them was reduced when you see the for renewal permits. The might for minor, it it actually went down. But the other questions that I know that our our staff and you as commissioners will get are regarding the issues that the or licensing issues with the Sheriff's Office that they take on that that duty for us with regards to concealed handgun licensing. And that's on page twenty seven. Those fees went up minor minorly again, and with that, there were just some additions for issues that they run into with and then explaining for transfers from other places. We've gotten a lot more of those lately for people wanting to transfer their concealed handgun license. So I know that you get questions on those as well as S G R questions that that's on page twenty nine. The only change in that was for the annual license renewal. The Lisa did have the do the calculation and suggested the increase of fifty dollars to the annual license renewal. Because I know that comes up too as well for questions. But those are really the only the major ones in those two departments of. Um, but those are really the only, the major ones, uh, in those two departments of, uh, environmental health and, um, onsite and, uh, then some minor ones in other places. I didn't ask, uh, anybody to specifically be here to answer questions, but if you submit them, I'm taking them. And then I will get them to, uh, each of the separate departments. If you have any questions about it.
And we bring this back in two weeks then?
Uh, yeah, so I, this, we're doing it a little earlier than normal, just to accommodate kind of my schedule, um, because of the, this having to come back, um, two weeks and still to be done before July first. So, uh, this proposed fee schedule before you today is just a discussion item. And, uh, it's on the agenda to be back before you on June fourth, uh, hopefully then for a decision action item. And then that proposed fee schedule, which will be a clean version without the highlight or cross through, uh, basically what, uh, we'd be asking Mr. Lipp to put on the website. Um, if adopted, uh, on June fourth or thereafter, that would be effective on July first of this year, not on June fourth or when adopted, but on July first.
Questions or feedback regarding?
No, just some, some of the fees went up quite a bit. Is that gonna be, I, I know you need to adjust for things, but does that mean six months from now, we looking at the same large increases or the incremental?
I would say no, in general, um, if for people that have been following this, uh, since twenty-twenty-one anyways, we went a long time without adjusting the fee schedule, especially in planning for all, you know.
Eight years, maybe?
Yeah, we used to, twelve, twelve to fifteen years. Um, and so there was some kind of, I mean, a, a little bit of a sticker shock with, uh, planning was doing it effort, I mean, they were really doing it every six months, trying to get in line with their actual costs and to be, um, you know, they were really like ten to fifteen percent of our surrounding counties, um, for the same services. And so they've kind of gotten theirs caught up. I've, I won't say I've been aggressive, but I've, I've, but I've been kind of relentless with reminding our departments to at least review this, check this out, because this does have to do with addressing, being able to provide services, staffing. Um, and so that it's not just everybody sharing the burden of this cost, but the people actually using the services are sharing at least part, a portion of it, a higher portion of it than everyone else. Um, and so when it happens, um, if it hasn't happened in a long time, such as with environmental health, uh, sometimes it does seem, um, like a lot. Um, but, uh, and that's why I want them to try to do it every six months so that it's never a lot. Um, you know, we had the, the solid waste rate, rate review here and that's happened before too. Um, where the, one of the, uh, service providers, one of our franchisees doesn't do a rate increase and everybody's happy about it at the time, but then they forget when there's a larger rate increase later. Um, and that, and, you know, it, nobody remembers when they didn't do it. Everybody remembers when it seemed big. And I try to tell our departments, that's the same thing. If you do it incrementally, people understand it a lot more and it's less of a shock, um, than when you don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. And they kind of expect you to never do it. And then you do do it.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, it, it, you know, I just say, I, I, the effect is the same, uh, the, um, in that year it's done, uh, but for us it can have, um, for the county, for providing the services, it can have that effect of not having the correct amount of staff or having upset customers because they have to wait for things. You know, they're asking for a permit, they're asking for, please come out and check my pool. And you can't do it. Again, there's not a whole lot of pools or hot tubs that, that, uh, have to be checked in the county. Most of them are in cities. Um, but, uh, uh, still when the customer wants you to do something and you have to say, it might be six weeks before we have the staff to do it. Um, you know, that's not what they want to hear. Um, they understand if the fee goes up a little bit, if they get prompt service then too.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
So, so the goal is just like bringing them up to the race the same as a comparable county is what we're looking at?
Um, that's part of it, but that's, that, that, that's not, that's just something we look at. Like if, if something looks out of whack, that's one of the first things I do is I look at lots of different counties. Um, and they, you'd be surprised how much they vary. Um, but what the main, the, the legal requirement is that there's a justification, you know, that's not just like what, what's happening in Bend or something like that. It's, you know, our staff, our costs, what d- does this make sense? Because some places their STR licenses and stuff are much, much higher than ours. But this is realistic for what our staff does and what, what our service cost. So, um, if we did, if we had more requirements, then the cost would go up. Like if we had to inspect things, you know, every three months, if we had those requirements, um, then the cost would go up, but, but we don't.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I think, thanks, Brian, for, uh, you know, being thorough and, and Walter is, you know, you're growing and evolving with us too. Brian, you have done a great job of advocating, uh, and making sure that it makes business sense, you know, and part of that is just communications with the departments and reminding them to, you know, take a look at our costs, because, you know, the saying, if you've seen one county, you've seen one county. And we just need to make sure that, uh, we're being fair to, to our costs and, you know, to our team, but also to the community. And I think Brian's a good advocate for that. Um, so Brian, this will come back. Uh, but in the meantime, I guess people should just understand they can see this on the, the agenda portal if they want to look at the changes and then of course the fee schedules online as well.
As stated, the only difference would be what I mentioned here today about the pools about that, because that, uh, Colleen didn't give me that change until after.
Yeah.
It was, it was too late. It was too late to keep asking our staff to change things over and over. So that's the only difference that, um, so far. If there is a difference in the meantime too, again, what I'll do is I would, um, make sure that was clear in a memo and have both the clean version and any other changes on the next agenda.
Great job. Thanks for that. And, you know, thanks for advocating. You do, do a good job of communicating to everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and we'll see you back there. We'll have this as mentioned as a decision action item in two weeks. We don't have any scheduled reports this morning. Next item will be public comment. I would like to take a ten minute recess and I will proceed to the meeting. Thank you.
So, ten forty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ken, we're still live streaming, just muted? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. It's ten forty-five, and I would like to reconvene this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. We are at the time in the agenda set aside for public comment. And Mr. Lipp, could I ask you to share the sign-up feed with me? We do have rules regarding public comment there on the table, but essentially, three-minute limit for everybody. This is not a dialogue. We will listen if we need to do follow-up. We were open to doing that after the meeting, of course. Okay. Trish Miller.
Morning, Trish.
Morning. Can I start?
Yes.
Lincoln County Human Resources, County Council, and the Commissioners have created an issue with cold case unit, limiting our abilities to investigate and clear cold cases. An attack on the District Attorney and her staff. The DA investigator position has been vacant for several months. The DA investigator supervises cold case investigators and our investigations. Without the DA investigator or the presence of a sworn police officer, we cannot interview suspects. The DA investigator also assists the district attorneys in preparing for court. They serve subpoenas, interview, provide guidance in transportation to victims and witnesses to and from court proceedings. Already shorthanded, the local police agencies are now tasked with those responsibilities. Due to the vacancy, I was tasked by the DA's office to complete a background check on an investigator position. As a former police officer and retired Lincoln County Deputy Detective, I have performed background checks and participated in hiring for Toledo Police Department. Elected department heads such as the DA and the sheriff are allowed to conduct backgrounds and internal investigations. Human Resources learned by way of monitoring our internal office emails that I had done the background. Without explanation, Director David Collier advised me by email, wouldn't do it in person, that I was not authorized to complete a background, then terminated me from the cold case position in which I'm a volunteer. Without due process, my key card was disabled. I did my background check on Orin Wallace. Orin was hired by DA Laney Danforth as a DA investigator. His wife Jenna Wallace came to Lincoln County as a deputy district attorney, later elected by the public as a DA. To be hired as a county employee, applicants must pass a background check. Mr. Wallace completed the previous background check and was hired. Mr. Wallace never left employment with Lincoln County. My updated background involved contacting local law enforcement, random DA attorneys and their office staff. I found no conflicts or complaints regarding the fact DA Wallace was married to Investigator Wallace. Many of the officers that worked with Wallace commented that they felt it was a benefit, and he was one of the best investigators they had worked with. For those who attend these bimonthly Commissioners' meetings, any negative comments, concerns, or by citizens or employees are responded to by cutting off their feed or walking out of a meeting. Commissioner Miller has been the exception, treating complaints in fairness, treating complaints with fairness, honesty, integrity. I encourage the public to attend county meetings and witness for themselves the conflict and blatant retaliation demonstrated by our county government.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
No. No applause, please. This is a public meeting.
I want to know if it reinstated.
As I said at the beginning, we do not have dialogue during public comment. If you want to follow up after the meeting, that's fine, but we're not going to enter into discussion here.
Well, Mr. Collier does not respond.
Okay. Patty Green.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Patty Green. I purchased, I'd like to talk about a piece of property I purchased from the county. I bought the property from the county, stated it was residential. It's a piece of property that is a hundred by fifty feet on the Celest River. When I bought it from the county, they were paying the electricity. They were paying the my state dock fees, not mine, but right after I purchased the property, I'm now told that I can't, I can't be on my property. I can't put even a brick on the property. And I have two pillars. I pay the state, and then I was just fed up with the whole thing, so I decided to sell the property. Then the county is telling the prospect buyers that they can't even park the boat at the boat dock. So I would like, and I'm also paying three hundred dollars a year in taxes, which I don't understand, if I can't use the property, can't be on the property. Why did you sell it to me? And in nowhere in this buyer statement where they're going to send it to the board to approve me buying this, did it say that I couldn't even put a brick on the property? I've lost about six buyers, seventh one just coming up, because they come to the county, the county says, well, you can't do anything. You can't even park your boat at the dock. I don't understand this. This is a state waterway. And I pay for those pillars and my dock where the county can say, I can't park my boat. Then I want you to tell everybody else on the Celest River, I'm sorry, folks, you can't park your boat at your dock. I paid twenty-one thousand dollars for it. I would either like my funds back, plus the four thousand that my entire family came out and tore the house down that was on this property that you could not see because of the blackberries. We cleaned up the whole piece of property. The only thing left on this property is a chimney and a septic and the power pole. Now, if there's all that on the property, why can't I picnic or camp or even build me a picnic table at this property? So I need to know who, whether it's legal counsel, or who I speak to after this meeting, and so that my lawyers can talk to your lawyers and refund me. I don't know what, but this is not, this cannot be legal.
Mr. Lipp, could you get Ms. Green's contact information after the meeting, and we will follow up with you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Hall, phone numbers are on the sign-in sheet, are they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Cynthia George.
So I've been pretty busy looking over you guys' budget, number one. And I'm going to call the Secretary of State's office and ask for there to be an investigation, because there's an awful lot of strange money being moved around. In the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the twenty-four and twenty-five budget, there's just unaccounted. I listened to the meeting last night, and even in the transit, it went from like twenty thousand dollars worth of office supplies, or even less than that, I think, up to seventy thousand dollars. And the lady was asked, why is there such an increase? And she didn't have a clue. Then there was operating increases up to five hundred thousand dollars. And when she was asked, she had no explanation, and it was her budget. But I've seen money getting tucked in everywhere throughout the county's budget of unexplained, and I think it came from COVID money, where you guys needed to get rid of it real quick. So I don't think that that's appropriate, number one. Number two, this renting of a building for Casey Miller, because you people cannot get along. This is happening throughout this county. Every city manager, every, we still don't know why Tim quit, walks away from a quarter of a million-dollar job. And you guys are just hiding things left and right, and we don't know what you're up to. But this renting a building so Casey can't be in the county commissioner's office is insanity. And why is, I mean, I'm seeing Claire is running everything, and then we've got, now we've got a yes man that's just backing everything Claire. There's no division of power here anymore, where once again, it used to be Wayne Belmont ran it all. And now we've got Claire taking over as a dictator, and this is not the way a county should be running. We should be working together, and we've never done that. You superseded state powers over and over with your county rules, and your weird decision-making is just not okay. People see through it, you know? You don't treat people the way you have all these years. You can't keep going this way. You need to learn to work together. And when we bring these issues forward, like the fire department that still doesn't have a fire station and all of our equipment everywhere and budgets that don't add up, it's not okay. Start doing, be respectful, number one. Try being respectful to the people, because we come here on issues, not because we like to sit here and talk to you, but we've got legitimate issues, water issues that are going to be huge. If that river turns toxic this year because we've clear-cut, we're all going to be gathering together.
Thank you. Angela Dodds.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
My name is Angela Dodds. I'm here on behalf of my sister, Kelly Disney, in her case, a cold case unit that Trish was talking about. I'm frustrated because from day one, my sister's case has been a joke. It was a joke for the police department when Jim Rivers stated she was a runaway, because that's when my sister's case stopped. It was put on a shelf, and it was put on a shelf for ten years, ten years until they found her skull. And again, another department. So three departments screwed up. They let somebody take home her skull and wash it, any evidence off of it. That would be the Oregon State Trooper that said it wasn't his jurisdiction. It was Saturday when it was taken to the sheriff's department, and the person in the jail said, sorry, nobody's here. Take it to the police station. Again, it was Saturday. Nobody at the police station took it, told them to take it home. So we took it home. And now I'm back here fighting to get my sister's case solved and fixed. And yet, because two departments can't seem to get along enough to get the job done for this community, I'm here begging for this to end. And it upsets me when I find out the only two people that are working on this case are volunteers that don't get paid, and one got fired because she was doing a job that she was asked to do by her supervisor. I don't need to know, I don't know how it's going to fix itself in this eternal, internal thing that you guys got going on. But every day I've lived with my sister being murdered, and it being somebody that's in this community now that's still walking around, had a family, and is still walking around here among you guys. And there's only two volunteers, I'm sorry, one volunteer at this time working her case. I need something done here. They are close to solving three cases down here, and with the lack of people to help them, it's going to go on the shelf again. And you guys are going to allow this killer to walk around this community, to go to these bars, to go to these stores that you guys all go to, sorry.
Thank you.
Please do something, fix us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Renee Baines.
Hello, councilors. My name is Renee Baines. I have been a resident here. Come on, where to go? In Lincoln County since nineteen ninety-three. And I remember a Mr. Bill Hall who ran for county commissioner stating he would be a voice for all the people. But he didn't ever speak for me. Now we have this person that has shut the people out of the commissioner's office and never returns any replies to emails or phone calls. This county is named after President Abraham Lincoln, who freed the slaves. So why would our elected officials choose to continue raising our taxes, forcing us into slavery so our money can be squandered as they see fit? We want transparency and accountability. Is that too much to ask? I'd like to know why our pledge of allegiance is not done prior to starting the meeting. And I would like to know what is going on with Haley?
Haley May.
Haley May, the little girl that was found in the duffel bag in the corridor at the parks. There's not enough being done, and I don't know if it has to do with anything with what you guys are concerned with, supposedly, or what. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Is it Casey Aris?
Hi.
Good morning. Welcome.
I'd like to come today. I have property, our company does, on South Eminan Road, and I came here previously before with some issues where the county had blocked it off. And I was directed to work with property management. However, I regret to inform you that that was not successful. We went in there, and they doubled back down on the five hundred dollars to open it. However, in order to raise those funds, it's always helpful to know what I would get for that five hundred dollars, and they were unable to tell me anything. They were not able to tell me a timeframe, it could be open, what I could access. We have maintenance that needs to be done on that property. We have equipment on there that we use for financial gain and supporting our family that is getting ruined. It needs to be moved on and off. We can't even get on there. We have my disabled brother-in-law. We can't get him on the property to help do anything because there's blockades up. And we just want to come together and kind of make a plan. What I did find out in some of my investigating is a neighbor's property has also been blocked. They did not solicit that. They did not ask for that. The county did that. In fact, the property management man told me that that lady just needs to come and ask for it to be moved. Well, I don't think we need to put anybody else out to get that moved. So I think if we can't negotiate an arrangement and figure out the easement with property management, at the very least, I would like the option to negotiate with the neighbor or find alternative options to get access to the property. And at the very least, I would like to ask for it to be moved off a neighbor's property who has no business. There's no reason for it being there. That's already been established. Property management has said that. That way I can attempt a secondary negotiation with the neighboring property and try and get access to the property that route if the county has its reasons for not, which they will not disclose to me, what they are for blocking it off and preventing access, because that would be the only easement. I know that we legally are allowed an easement of some way, shape, or form. And if we can't make movement in the county side, I would like at least to be allowed in the private sector to make movement, and I would like to ask for that. We don't need to put anybody else out there, time their effort to come here and have them go through that for something they didn't ask for. So at the very least, I'd like to start moving forward. There's maintenance that needs to be done, equipment's being damaged, and I would really like to gain access as soon as possible. Thank you.
Who would be best to follow up on this? Okay. If you would speak with Ms. Yule after the meeting.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
It is. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Davis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Barbara.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I'm sorry that I have to be here, but I'm feeling unheard. I sent a letter along with four other citizens of Lincoln County to the Board of Commissioners. So I'll read an excerpt from that. Transparency, that was one of the issues on which Casey Miller ran for county commissioner. From the news reports, it appears that his repeated requests for having his questions answered have been met with opacity and silence, not transparency. We, as tax-paying citizens of Lincoln County, have questions as well. Why is it that Commissioner Casey Miller, an elected official, can be exiled from his office by the county council and the head of HR? On whose authority was an investigation ordered on Casey Miller's behavior? And incidentally, that investigation found him not guilty of bullying employees and violation of a couple of public meeting laws. Now, does the punishment really fit the crime? I'm wondering why is he being exiled from his own office to a rented space outside of the courthouse? Is that really the best use of our taxpayer dollars? I understand this is not a dialogue, but I would like follow up, as well as my other citizens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Jonathan Hoy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You bet.
My name is Jonathan Hoy, and I'm here as a resident of Lincoln County to have my voice heard on the question of public comments during BOC meetings. The proposal set forth at the May seventh BOC meeting to limit public comment to only current session agenda items or discontinue them completely is a bad idea. The proposition that your constituents' concerns will be adequately heard and addressed through alternative methods of contact, such as email, phone calls, that can be concealed from public exposure, portrays either a fear on the part of the commissioners as to what may become to broader public attention, or worse, an apathy as to the concerns of the constituents. Neither of these traits reflects positively on the board. Statements made in public and recorded on video are much more powerful than an email that may be only seen by the commissioners and can potentially be disregarded. Limiting public discourse to only current agenda items allows the board to avoid and quash what may be important but potentially contentious topics. I feel strongly enough about preserving this public freedom of speech option that even as an introvert, I feel the need to come before you today. Since the last BOC meeting, I went through more than a year's worth of BOC meeting media and reviewed the public comment segments. There were several meetings where no public comments were made, or only positive comments were made. If there seems to be a spate of contentious commentary from the public in more recent BOC meetings, that in itself may be an indication of the need for more open and public dialogue. In terms of maintaining the decency of public commentary, I wholeheartedly support the BOC in maintaining a level of decorum by disallowing improper, inappropriate, or vulgar commentary. That has occurred at times in the past and should not be permitted. Sometimes the need to stop such commentary is obvious. Sometimes it is more esoteric. I urge the Commissioners to be introspective and judicious before making the decision to abruptly stop any particular public commentary. The general public observing these proceedings, whether here in person or remotely by video, is capable of recognizing impropriety on the part of those addressing the board, as well as censorship by the board. So I appreciate your time this morning.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Right, that brings us to the conclusion of everyone who signed up for public comment.
So.
Oh.
Chair Hall, also, I have comment as well, so do you want me to?
No. No.
Well, I mean, whether I go and sit there, Claire, whether I make it from here, I have comments to make.
Commissioner Hall.
When would you like me to make them?
Business decorum.
Pardon, Chair Hall. Pardon, Chair Hall.
Okay.
If you're on the Zoom meeting and you would like to make public comment, would you please use the raise hand function? Well, I got a Q and A.
Dead naming a commissioner is inappropriate, okay?
Okay, um, Tyann Rios.
Can you hear me?
We hear you, Tyann.
Here.
Okay. I'm just very concerned about how this decision was made to oust a county commissioner from doing his duties that we elected him to do and to remove him from the building to rent a space when there's already a space available to, to him to work? Is there some way I can talk to somebody about how these decisions were made? How did it come to that? Who makes, did some, did you guys vote on that? I know you're not supposed to engage in conversation, but could somebody tell me who to call?
You want to follow up with her?
Tyann, if you want to call me, this is Ken. You can call me.
Okay, because I would like to question on how all of this came to be because it just, this is really not what the community wants to see in their elected officials. Thank you for entertaining my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else online? If you did want to offer public comment, please use the raise function, the raise hand function on Zoom. Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Okay, Tyren.
So.